All right, it is six o'clock. I will call the July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. This evening, we have Reverend Tim Irving from the Withfield Baptist Church to provide the invocation. If you would please stand or remain standing for the pledge.
Let's go to the Lord now in prayer. Almighty and gracious Lord, we come before you for the people of this county, and we ask that you would pour down upon them your great blessings. We pray that you would help us in this county to make the decisions that need to be made for the benefit of all the people. We pray for your wisdom tonight for those that must decide. We pray for listening ears and open hearts and open minds so that decisions that are made might be decisions that would be beneficial to our whole county. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll note on the record, we do have a call with all members except for Mr. Horni President. First item on the agenda is always a citizen's time. I'll call you up. Each person has three minutes. And the first person we have signed up is Mr. Jerry Blevins. Mr. Blevins?
Since I spoke at your June thirtieth meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors, little has changed, but still there seems to be a slight improvement in my problems with my neighbor. Saturday evening, July ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, my TV slowed down from its normal operation times, and my personal computer locked up when I went to work on my civil complaint case. I decided to go to the public library to do my civil complaint, but the computer there was also messed with. However, I was still able to finish my civil complaint. Any neighbor problems, no matter how slight, will be noted at future With County Board of Supervisors meeting. I would like to thank Scott Pally for his reporting on sixty minutes of the cyber attacks on personnel who worked either on White House grounds or nearby. This helps to boost my case for just how bad the problems have become. Some of the people attacked were totally disabled at a very young age. Others were attacked while still in their homes to show out on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. This goes to show there's someone out there with at least as much cyber power as we, if not more so. Due to working most of the time on my farm and other projects, I haven't kept up with cyber technology or new laws passed by our governments, both state and federal. As a result of my local government's trying to assassinate me on February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, I decided to take a closer look at cyber technology and laws in general. So I purchased a very interesting and expensive law book and started reading. I was very surprised at what I discovered. I discovered that laws affecting local governments and the police had a lot of might, could, and may in them, and laws affecting the public and criminal defendants had a lot of must-and-shield technology and terminology in them. Taking this newfound knowledge on the road, I quickly learned that the legal professionals I talked to agree with me that the legal skills were not balanced. I reckon it doesn't matter unless you're someone who believes in governing other people, by the people, and for the people. The problem seems to go all the way back to Declaration of Independence from England. Civil rights and human rights are always talked about, but when it comes to constructive changes, we somehow fall short of our goals. Most of we talk about human rights problems of other countries should draw away attention from our own problems. In the spring of two thousand and nineteen, I traveled to California taking I forty most of the way, and while traveling through New Mexico, I came upon a sign ahead which said, Indian Trading Post. I stopped and went in, and while I was walking around looking at the goods the Indians had made, I noticed a glass showcase in the middle of the room with a female Indian sitting on a stool near the showcase. And as I got closer to her, she said her following words without me saying anything. You white people have done the Indians wrong, and you're still doing it. Having studied early market history and knowing what the Indians have been through, I didn't have a problem agreeing with her on that point. I recall that in the early eighteen hundreds, gold was discovered in Georgia, some of the gold was on Cherokee Indian lands, which probably got the Indians relocated to Midwest via what became the Trail of Tears, and approximately fifteen thousand Indians died on the march. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. All right, next person we have signed up is Mr. Tam Toplin.
Speaking on behalf of the community, a lot of citizens have addressed this with me on the Apex Center in With County. It's been a troubleful three years, a lot of community people been involved, a lot of people that's been on our authority have worked very hard, put a lot of efforts into it. Seems like it's fallen to the wayside, but we've got an extreme event coming up, one of the bigger events that we've had, which benefits St. Jude's Children's Hospital. Last year, it raised over sixty-five thousand. I think that we need to consider trying to keep the center open until the end of September because the With County taxpayers have already spent their money, they've already developed, built it. The money's been spent. I think the small amount of money that we could provide as the county to put into the center would be spent very wisely to spend anywhere from sixteen to twenty-five thousand dollars to give back to St. Jude's. They're projected this year for eighty to a hundred thousand dollars for St. Jude's Children's Hospital. I think that the citizens of the community have spoken and don't understand why we would want to close it down, shut it down, when the money's already been spent. I think that it's been addressed several times that maybe a management company could run the organization, run the center, and make it profitable, or at least to pay the debt and to keep it paid for and keep the expo center going for the community. It draws in a huge amount of people when there are events, but it's going to take a management team to run the center. So the biggest thing that I think that I'm hearing from business owners and people from the community is like, I think we need to try to keep the doors open and keep it running and established at least through the end of September so we can provide this great opportunity for With County citizens and Allison Lawson to do the work that she's done, to provide and actually give back to St. Jude's. I think it would be a huge benefit for everyone in the community, especially the taxpayers that have provided money for this to be built, and hopefully we can come up with a solution with a management company that has a vision to keep the expo center open in the county and make it profitable enough to pay the debt and to keep it running.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tam.
All right. Next person we have signed up is Mr. Zach Lester. Mr. Lester?
Good afternoon, and good morning. Just always going to come up and bring you a couple topics. First thing, going to read a quick quote. A government is instituted for the common good, for the protection, safety, prosperity, and happiness of the people, and not for profit, honor, or private interests of any one man, family, or class of men. Therefore, the people alone have an incontestable, unalienable, and indefeasable right to institute government and to reform, alter, or totally change the same when their protection, safety, prosperity, and happiness require it. That's John Adams, one of the founding fathers. I've got a couple notes of just topics that I'd like to talk about. We have the, let's see, the Wisconsin Supreme Court bans the use of drop boxes in the future and past elections, so that's going to draw some attention to the drop back boxes that were used. Wisconsin was one of the important states. I think that's going to draw some attention. Election integrity investigator Greg Phillips announces investigative team has identified unique devices of interest in location of TCF Center election night ballot dump. These are just some headlines of some of the bigger things. Greg Phillips is part of the True the Vote organization, has been tracking election integrity for like ten, twenty years now, fifteen years. Very good things that they're doing, and it's not partisan. There's no party that should be standing for election integrity. It should be for the country. Every American should be proud to say we have good, honest elections. We have, and these are some of the big ones, the SCOTUS ruling this past week, West Virginia versus the EPA, which is restricting the federal government's ability to supersede our constitutional state rights. We've seen a couple of those. Roe v. Wade was another big one. SCOTUS also striking down the New York gun law, expansion of concealed carry. So all of these things are limiting the federal government's power and trying to give the people back the power, which is what's supposed to happen, how our country was set up, but everybody got kind of lackadaisical. So what we have to do is start coming to these meetings and taking that power back instead of just looking to the federal government to make all of our decisions through the FDA, the USDA, all of these things that should be based on state votes, local, county. People should be talking about this stuff. So I come to all these meetings all the time with all these big topics, and we just continue to talk about potholes and washboarded roads and the most menial things, and we're literally losing our country once again. I keep coming month after month after month. I would love to have a meeting with all of you all so we could sit down and actually talk about what we do as a country going forward. Again, it's not based off of a party I think that the American people really should be focusing. We look to the Dutch right now, their farmers are at war because their government has locked down farming in New Zeal- not New Zealand, but New Holland, Holland, but the farmers are not allowed to farm because of the regulations. We're seeing the same thing in California with the truckers, the DEF regulations are not allowing the truckers to ship. So there's just so much good stuff we could be coming to talk about, guys. I've got a lot more, y'all think about it. I'd love to hear from somebody. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lester. That's all we have signed up for, citizen's time, so I'll close citizen's time. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing for the FY twenty-three budget amendment carryovers. Mr. Barrett?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'll be glad to read the announcement here, and basically this year, due to our large amount of our carryover funds, it was required for us to do, hold a public hearing for this to look at amending this into our FY twenty-three budget. So the notice hereby given pursuant to fifteen point two, twenty-five oh seven, the Code of Virginia, and amendments thereto. The With County Board of Supervisors intends to consider an amendment to increase the FY twenty-three budget for the carryover projects from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. The projects are listed and have a grand total of fourteen million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Public hearing is scheduled Tuesday, July twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, at six oh five PM, or as soon as practical thereafter in the boardroom of the county administration building, three forty South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Barrett. We didn't have anybody sign up for the public comment portion of the public hearing, so I'll close the public comment portion. Anything?
We have a recommendation under Budget Committee, Mr. Chairman, for this, so I do not see any action needed at this time.
All right. We'll move on to the payment of our invoices. Each board member has received a copy of the invoices in your board package. I'll entertain a motion to approve the invoices. So we have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions, discussion, or any invoice any board member wants to pull out? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Cook?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on our agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes. So move. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Burnett. Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Our next item is old business. We have some appointment vacancies. Mr. Barrett, did you have a chance, or did somebody contact these folks?
Do you know if the correct department are ready to be reappointed, Ms. Collins?
They are not. If it's contacted, it's confirmed. They can turn back to everyone.
All right. We'll just leave that under old business for our next meeting. Anything else under old business, Mr. Barrett?
I don't have anything, sir.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything?
Sure.
All right. Move on to new business. We have a staff street resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I would request the board adopt this resolution. Mr. Crowgy has worked hard over the last couple of years to get staff street constructed to state maintained standards. Originally started with a revenue sharing project, but that was going to take too long. He took it on himself to do it directly. He has provided all the information to VDOT. VDOT requested that we put this on our July twelfth agenda to add this road, additional staff street to the secondary system.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-two dash twelve. So move. Have a motion by Mr. Burnett, a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved. The next item is the George Worth High School SRO grant award.
Easy one here and a great one for you all. Recommend approval of this grant award. It's actually a full amount, a larger amount this year because the match has been fully provided by the state in the process. They're on a matching fund for us. I appreciate Mr. Klein, the Sheriff's Department's work, and Ms. Delp's assistance with this, and recommend that you all approve. Authorize county administrator to sign this grant.
So move. Have a motion by Mr. Cook. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain.
Aye.
So approved. Next item is the spotted lanternfly quarantine.
The VDOTs have previously spoken to us a little bit about this. Received an email that we were going to put in the informational package just about it, and then the day that we were preparing the board package, we got this latest email that is here that indicates that the spotted lanternfly quarantine expansion has been approved effective July eighth, and With County is within that area. We have requested VDOTs to see if someone could come to our next meeting just to talk some more about it, but basically this requires a permit for certain businesses. I have looked online at the permitting process. It's sort of a self-training on the permit, and then you sort of, you take a test, and everybody passed tests, and then sort of a train to train, or you train others, but it's basically an attempt to keep from this spreading this spotted lanternfly. Not sure the impact on especially the logging, the wood business, but those businesses that are taking goods outside of the county have to apply for this permit, and it's a very low fee on the permit fee to get it, but it's basically, they'll get the permit, and then they have to make certain they're going to check that these products are not, these lanternflies and things are not on their products that are leaving the property.
Is this going to include the farmers that's on that end of the county? Or throughout the county?
It's the whole county. I'm not exactly sure how it's going to address the agricultural side.
Who's responsible for the permitting process?
It's on the VDOT's website, yes.
Can we get Mr. Miller to attend the next meeting, whenever VDOTs comes? I mean, I think there needs to be an educational piece to that, and I would assume that would fall under the extension office.
Yeah, I apologize that I don't have more information. I'm trying to learn more about it myself, but basically it's, I've let David, shared it with David Manley as well, just so he's aware of it, just so, you know, there's a couple counties in Northern Virginia, and I won't name them because I'm not sure, so I don't want to misname them, but they already had this in place, and the expansion's gone to several other counties, as you can see on the list.
And I didn't see them indicating their correspondence. Do you know, I mean, have they found more?
They've been spotted, is all I, I tried to read up on it today, but, I mean, just that they've been spotted.
I knew they were spotted here a while back when they originally contacted us, but I just wondered what the reasoning, if there was.
Hopefully, we can get Mr. David here to speak and give us some more information.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is Apex Authority funding request. Mr. Barrett, I believe you received that?
Yes, sir, and as alluded to by Mr. Toplin during citizen's time, the authority currently has no employees working for them. They're trying to minimize their expenses, and they have asked for this additional funding to try to get them through to the September event. Obviously, in this year's budget, there was not any funding that was approved for that, so action of this would require an amendment and appropriation of the funds to do so. As you are aware, the authority has not been able to make their lease payments over the last couple of quarters, and the next quarter's coming up this month of July as well. I have put on the agenda consultation with legal counsel regarding property lease under our closed meeting session, if you all would like to discuss that with legal counsel at that time.
All right. I will pull up for any discussion or motions. All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to emergency medical dispatch software purchase. Mr. Hankins, I believe this is you.
It is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We have a mandate from the state that we provide emergency medical dispatch services to our residents and visitors by December twenty-third, thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three. We want to beat that deadline if possible. We have obtained a grant in the amount of forty-four thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars that requires a local match of at least eleven thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars. We have vetted the three providers that the state recommends that we use, and we were looking for one that would give us the best training for our dispatchers, the most flexibility for our use, so if we need to make changes to the software, if our operational medical director says, no, we want to have a protocol that's a little bit different, we can make those changes without having to call the software provider and pay for changes to be made. The software allows that. We also wanted something that would give management some analytics, some tools to measure how our dispatchers work so that we can look for areas of improvement, try to make sure that we get the best possible service. And Power Phone is the service that we've determined that provides all of those tools. In order to pay for that, we would need a total of sixty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars, so we would need some funding that's included in your carryover to be used toward that purchase. It is compatible with our current CAD system, the computer-assisted dispatching, so there's not an extra cost there, but there will be some ongoing cost as with most of our software-as-a-service products that we use, but staff believes that we'll get the best bang for the buck out of this. Our dispatchers have to go through ongoing training every year. These modules are set up in a way that is more engaging, more practical than a lot of the training opportunities that are out there. So staff recommends that you authorize staff to enter into negotiations for a contract with Power Phone in the amount of sixty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars for the EMD software. Be glad to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
Our part's only eighteen, seven, and thirty-four, right?
Yes, sir, unless we can get it lower.
Now, does this fall into the split between the county and the two tails, or how does that work?
It would.
And do you have any idea what the yearly maintenance fees?
I believe it's around eleven thousand dollars. There's two components to that. One is the ongoing maintenance and support, so we get upgrades as they become available. The other part is the training part, which pays for the company to update their trainings and keep them current, and I believe the, I believe the county share of that is approximately sixty-one, sixty-two percent.
I was going to say sixty-seven or sixty-eight, but yes.
All right. Does anybody else have any more questions? All right. I'll entertain a motion to authorize staff to enter into negotiations with Power Phone in the maximum amount of sixty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars for state-mandated emergency medical dispatch software. So we have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any more questions or discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else under new business, Mr. Barrett?
No, sir.
All right. We'll move on to board reports. The first one we have is the Budget Committee. The Budget Committee met on July the sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, and recommends approving the updated carryovers. All right. Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on the carryovers?
Mr. Chairman, I have one recommendation to make on this, and I have no issue at all with the carryover. We certainly do need to carry over the six hundred and some thousand dollars requested by the school system. However, our finance and their finance department is still, or I guess my finance department is still going through the final numbers from the school year, and I would request that we either carry that over contingent upon the final numbers or remove the school system carryover for right now until we do it, because obviously their bids came in today, they're going to need every bit of this carryover to go towards that project. So either carry over contingent upon the final amount that approved, or just remove it and we'll put it on for the next meeting agenda.
What's your, I mean, what would be easier?
You've had the public hearing on. If you want to take it off and just approve it, the figure's thirteen million, four twenty-eight, three thirty-two without the school carryover. And like I said, I'm not opposed to the school carryover. I just want to make certain that we have it corrected. If there's more to carry over, we'll give more. If there's less, it'll be less.
Procedural question, coming from a committee. How do we change that?
I would recommend a motion and a second at that point in time, since that's not the committee's recommendation. Withdraw the committee recommendation and make a motion to approve that.
So just to withdraw the school board?
No, or just to withdraw the motion, the committee recommendation.
Okay, I'll make a motion just to remove the committee recommendation.
All right. Have a motion to remove the committee recommendation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there questions or discussion on that? All right. All those who favor signature by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So removed.
And I would request a motion then to approve thirteen million, four hundred and twenty-eight, three thirty-two, which is the total carryover list that's before you, less the scores.
So move. All right. I have a motion by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else from the Budget Committee?
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Move on to the Economic Development Committee.
The Economic Development Committee met on July the sixth, two thousand and twenty-two and makes the following recommendations to approve the attached option agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway.
Right. Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Is there any questions or discussion on that?
Just a question, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Barrett, is this associated with Lot twenty-four?
This is actually, and I apologize if there is not any map on here, there is not. This is actually, it's not associated with Lot twenty-four, so there's not a conflict there. This is actually at the very end of the inland port, the eastern end of the inland port, where the mainline rail is. They are wanting to obtain additional easement along their mainline rail.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to double check. Thanks, sir.
I would say this is more about passengers than freight, if that answers your question.
Got it.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Cook.
Aye.
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 So approved.
The next recommendation is to approve waiving the remaining building permit fees associated with the phase of the Blue Star project.
Right. Coming from committee, it doesn't need a second. Mr. Barrett, do you want to?
Yeah, and I'm going to just clarify your motion just a second, it's what's written. It's basically on twenty-four B, so this is only on Lot twenty-four B, which is where the NBR plant is going, but that's the recommendation that came from committee. Basically, we have enterprise-owned incentives that generally, and I'll use Mr. Smith's Gatorade building as an example. Basically, we have enterprise zone incentives that generally, and I'll use Mr. Smith's Gatorade building as an example. Most of the time, your building permits are one large building permit for, you know, a million square foot building or two hundred thousand square foot building. In this situation, they've got several different buildings that are being built on the property. The way that the enterprise zone incentives are written is basically you waive building permits after the first twenty thousand square feet. Well, they have invested in twenty thousand square feet worth of building permits so far, but they've got additional buildings and none of those are gonna be, none of their buildings actually are over twenty thousand square feet. So, this justice is having you all agree that this follows the spirit of the incentives in waiving the additional building permits, like what happened for an industry if it was one large building there. We're not getting new building permits. They will still get building permits, but they will not be charged for those building permits.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Mr. Barrett? All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Mr. Terry.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So approved, anything else from Economic Development?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got.
All right, good of board, member of time, Mr. Terry.
The, I had a couple of issues or phone calls from Ager Park, and I discussed those with Mr. Barrett, and that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Terry, Mr. Smith?
I got a couple of things, I know, Mr. Barrett just wants to speak about one, I'll skip it, and Ms. Lawson to speak about the other one. The crosswalk, Mr. Barrett, thank you for following up on that. And I will get that letter of recommendation done this day sooner than later on that piece. Any follow-ups on exit eighty-four on the water on that side?
I have, we have looked at it, the architect, the engineers with the master plan are going to be presenting the next month's water committee meeting, that whole master plan of what's out there, and that project is in there. If we have knowledge of any industrial, commercial development that has an interest in it, I would ask that they contact us with a JIDA, because that opens up some additional incentive money that could speed that process up.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Hankins, I know we spoke last week, or our last meeting, about the lead mines construction. Is it moving forward on a timely timeline?
That's a loaded question. Not as fast as we would like for it to, but it is moving forward. I visited four days last week, and there was progress. They have most of the sheet rock up, and they were mudding the sheet rock Friday when I was there. So, that's, that's progress. But they still have the back half of that building to do, adding the shower, the space for the washer and dryer, doing the reconfiguration in the backside of that building. So, there's still plenty for them to do. I don't think they'll be done in July, but they are making progress on the bunk room. So, it's possible those will be usable fairly soon. And certainly, that's been our push, is to try to get at least the HVAC parts functional so that our staff down there doesn't have to suffer through some of the heat.
Okay, thanks, sir. And then the last question I got, Mr. Chairman, is again, Mr. Hankins, any more information about the Max Meadows Fire Department?
I have sent the revised MOA to Chief Haywood again and asked for him to call me to arrange a time to sit down and go over that. I have not heard back from him.
All right, thank you.
And just because you usually ask, the grass was mowed at the house on Jacksonville Heights this past weekend. That's all that was done, it wasn't left in very good shape. The high grass is just laying there. So, I think there's additional work that we'll have to do from a code enforcement standpoint on that property, but at least it looks a little better.
All right, thanks, sir. Going back to the Max Meadows piece, we have a deadline that he, on that, I mean, I think it's been going on long enough. I know I said it last week, or our last meeting, I keep saying last week, but our last meeting. I think we need to, whether we do it with the fire and rescue meeting, I think we need to say, hey, this is the date.
I, I agree with you, but it's like I told you before, it's your area and I follow your direction or the burners' direction.
Well, I mean, we've, we've talked about it, we've talked it to death, it's time to either put it to action or just discard it and not talk about it again.
Yeah, let's definitely add it on to the agenda for Monday. And then I also have one more thing I wanted to add on to when it's my turn.
That's all right, Mr. Chairman.
All right, this follows.
Okay. The, you all probably, I think everyone received the email about the staff, staffing issue at Lead Mines. I know we put it in our budget to, you know, definitely look into the staffing. I know things don't happen overnight, but it's really getting scarce down there with the staffing that's available. So, definitely want to talk about that Monday at Fire and Rescue as well. See if there's anything we can do to kind of speed up, to make sure that there's coverage on the road for the citizens in that area. Mr. Barrett, I did have a gentleman reach out to me regarding water on Whipper Will. And I could not, I told him I would have to talk to you, I cannot remember if that was part of the Barrett Mill project or not. If it, I don't believe.
It is, if you can give me his contact information or address, whatever, I can look at it and see. But there, it does run up a little bit of Whipper Will, but there's, I'll look at the address and see.
Okay, I've got the address, I'll give it to you after the meeting, and that's all I have, thank you.
And just to follow up, it's not just one person on Whipper Will, it's several.
Yeah, I think it's, it's gonna be the people from where it stops on.
On up.
On.
It's the dry conditions this year.
Well, I think it's brought it more to a head than it hasn't.
Mr. Barrett?
Yeah, I got back to just one item, emails with Mr. Smith about site lane and be meeting with Mr. Skeen from the school board to look the site over. But I was just wondering if we could reach out to DDOT and see, get some feedback on what they was looking at as well. I remember that was discussed a little bit ago.
Certainly follow up them, see if there's any, any options or anything to improve the site distance there that they can do.
And that's all.
Mr. Cook?
Like Mr. Terry, I got some concern over Ager Park. And I was wondering, have we done the paperwork yet to ask for the money for Withland to help us with that? Or what are we doing on that, where do we stand on Ager Park?
The applications are due August first. Ms. Delp has met several times, at my understanding, with Mr. Jackson from the Withland Foundation and is finalizing that grant to go in. I believe at the last meeting, you all have, is that the grant they approved at the last meeting?
Yes.
At the last meeting, you all, you all took action to approve that grant going in. But it is, it is going into them, I think August first was the deadline.
It's, we have a weekly staff meeting. Ms. Delp and I will go through that during our regular staff meeting tomorrow morning. She's got the document ready for me to review to make sure that, you know, just from my standpoint, we've included everything we need to. Once I've given it the review, she's ready to submit it.
The second thing is I got a call about the trash dump again. Apparently, a guy had a wooden fence, and he tore down a couple of rotten panels and put them in the back of the pickup truck and was told that it was more than a wheelbarrow of trash and that they have been told that they'd be fired if they allow more than a wheelbarrow of trash to be dumped in the dumpster. And, you know, they thought it was ridiculous that a guy could pull in there with a truckload of trash bags on the back of his truck and throw them in the compactor, but you can't put a couple of fence panels that have been broken down and rotten into the other trash panel.
Which center was this?
Huh?
Which center was this?
I would assume so, guys from Westfield. But, I mean, I kind of agree with him, a wheelbarrow of trash to go in a trash dump is just ridiculous. If that's in the contract, we need to rework that contract, that.
It's actually in your ordinance, that's the challenge. It's, it says, actually, the ordinance says like three squares of roofing is allowed. Billy has, to help out the citizens, understand the value, puts that into about basically what it is for the wheelbarrow load. But that, it's within the county's ordinance is where that's coming from.
We need to look at that. I mean.
Oh, and I'll say before, you can't legislate common sense. But at the end of the day, common sense should be the rule.
Agreed.
That's, that's the challenge with it, I agree.
I just, like I said, he said a wheelbarrow load, and me, I mean, if that's the ordinance, that's crazy.
Were you, uh?
Thank God I don't have a wooden fence.
Well, I don't have a wheelbarrow.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I have no idea how many panels he called, but that, Mr. Wald is correct, it comes down to common sense. The goal is that the trash is, receptacles are there, and this is my understanding from when the board put together this ordinance from long ago. The goal was to keep somebody from bringing in several pickup loads of material, and that's why it's limited to one eight-foot bed of trash a day. That way, all citizens had access to it, so it was, it was there to do it. That's for their trash.
That's not the way I understand, he said he only had, it was in his truck.
Yeah.
He said he had a pick, he had, had him broken down in the back of his truck, so I mean.
Building construction debris is classified separate. And that is where the, it, those trash, trash bags and stuff like that is one, and the building debris, and that comes from the ordinance on it, and it was trying to limit it. And plus, you know, if it, there wasn't any other option, but that's, obviously, the other option is taking it off of the transfer station, which is designed to handle all of that. But you do have to pay a fee to dispose of the transfer station. One load of wood, like what you're talking about, certainly seems like the common sense test would have passed that it was close to it. Or at least let him unload a wheelbarrow load of it at that time.
Yeah, I, I don't know what they define as a wheelbarrow, but I mean, I, in my mind, a wheelbarrow is, you know.
Well, I mean, I think, like, you know, if Mr. Farthing pulls up there with a dump trailer that says Scott Farthing Construction, that's pretty obvious that, you know, that needs to go to the transfer station. But, you know, I, you know, we, Mr. Hankins just touched on, you know, enforcing property maintenance ordinance. I know that's a totally different situation, at least property, but, you know, somebody's trying to improve their property. I mean, but I don't know how we fix that.
Can you, can you email me that individual's name and contact information, and I'll get in touch with him or her and discuss it?
Can we have a test that we give these people for, if they get hired?
Well, I will comment, I actually was, just for the information, I did receive a call today expressing a concern about some recycling needing to be emptied, and I actually went and asked Mr. Bowers about it. He said, actually, I've already discussed that today, that there was too, there's too much recycling material that's been hauled off. But this lady was very complimentary of the staff at fifty-two North, that the change has happened out there and said they're always very nice and quick to help. And I said, I do not get that very often, I appreciate you letting me know, and I'll pass that on to Mr. Bowers, so.
We'll keep that thinking. You done.
Now, we got one more, out fifty-two, the, on the right-hand side there, we've already addressed it once, where you all went out. The guy that's dumping his trash along the side of his hill there and burning it. And we've already been out there once, I know. The guy that got, the guy that's got the garage has cleaned it up, but the guy that's still putting his, making a dump out there alongside the road.
We will send code enforcement, if you'll, if you'll send me, if you have an address or anything on that, I'm not recalling which one that one is, I don't know if Mr. Hankins is right now or not, but if you'll send me an address or general area, we'll send our staff out there to look at it.
I'll do it.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Five thousand block of Stoneford, that's sound right.
About right. Five thousand, okay.
Anything else, Mr. Cook?
That's all, sir.
All right, going back to the trash centers, I don't know if they've run some kind of special old tires, but everybody in With County's apparently got new tires. And way too many tires in retreat in Apple House, per the contract.
We concur with you, and that's exactly when Billy was talking to me this morning. He indicated that, he told him the recycling, the recycling of the tires, recycling of the metal, recycling of the plastics needed to be pulled. And he said, you know, immediately, take your day and pull nothing but these recyclings and get them out of here. But I will pass that along as well.
And Blade Road, they're paving it finally, finishing it. And I found out that Pine View is supposed to be the next two weeks, and that's actually all done. So, that, but besides that, one last thing, and I know Ms. Lawson's got something else. My counterpart on the school board, Steve King, if you don't know, had surgery. He did get home this afternoon, but if you would, keep him in your prayers, he's, it's not as bad as he was thinking it was, but still, still pretty serious, so. And on the school board thing, I believe Dr. Cole will be at our next meeting. They opened the Scott Memorial bids this afternoon at two o'clock. I may have had a slight stroke, but I don't think it's gonna affect me. It was a little bit more than what we expected, but Dr. Cole assured me that he would be working with the contractor to see what they could shave off of it. And if Mr. Barrett wants to throw out the low number, he can, but I blocked it from a mine.
Don't quote me, but I believe the number I was giving was twenty-seven million and fifty thousand dollars. I know the twenty-seven is correct.
That mine, I shut down after that. You stayed in for dollars and cents. Ms. Lawson, do you have something else, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, since we're talking about Ager, I haven't had anyone personally reach out to me, but it's all over social media, that it's dangerous, it's rusted. So, when I hear that, you know, it makes me worry, but, so I just went out to look, and I don't think it's dangerous. I do think maybe if you could have Billy or Kevin or whoever, just maybe go check a few things out. There are a few broken boards, you know, while we wait for whatever the next step is. If they could just kind of go check, make sure it is safe. There was a screw sticking out, I took it out and trashed it. There's a broken cinder block laying, I mean, a few, it wouldn't take, it wouldn't take any time just for someone to go through. One of the bridges broke, it's broken, they could just take it apart, that's all.
And it's also, how old is that?
That's old.
Nineteen ninety-four.
I mean, it's actually, and I was really concerned when I saw a lot of the comments, but it's not, I mean, it definitely needs repair, don't get me wrong.
Well, and it's, you know, one thing, it's not like we're ignoring it, but what was the cost, is what we got a couple of years ago to replace it?
Eight, four, five hundred thousand?
That was nine hundred thousand that they, we were talking about. Since then, we've gone to other companies and it's significantly lower. So, that's what we're applying to the Withland Foundation for. I know you've talked about using other funding sources to replace the equipment if this doesn't come through.
I just want to make sure it's safe, that's all. And I'm not professional, but I didn't see anything that was.
It needs, for lack of a better term, you have to have tender loving care with something that's that old. And you've got to go out there and you've got to put the boards back on, and sometimes the older kids come through and abuse more than play on them, so.
All right, all right, next item on the agenda is a closed meeting. Entertain a motion to go in a closed session under two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight three, acquisition disposition of real property, the Apex Property, and two point two dash thirty-seven eleven eight eight, consultation with legal counsel for a property lease.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a motion by Mr. Smith, who?
I did, sorry, I talked over you there, sir.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Terry, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Have a motion by Mr. Smith, a second by Mr. Terry. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now being closed session.
Uh, y'all ready?
Entertain a motion, oh, I'm sorry, you read it, Ms. Collins. Entertain a motion to come out of closed session. Have a motion by Mr. Burnett.
Second.
Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now back in regular session. Mr. Terry, if you'll read the certification.
Yes, sir. Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors has convened a closed meeting on this, on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two point two dash thirty-seven twelve of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the With County Board of Supervisors that such a meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters are lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convened in the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and are considered by the With County Board of Supervisors. And Mr. Chairman, I'll make that a motion.
All right, have a motion to ratify the certification by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. All right, is there any other business to come before the board?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion that we authorize, or that we terminate the lease at the Apex Center and authorize our county administrator to execute those duties.
Right, I have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Cook?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else, Mr. Barrett?
I have no other business to jump.
Mr. Hankins, do you have anything?
No, sir, I do not.
Ms. Collins? Mr. Farthing?
Uh, VACO Conference, we received the information on it, and Ms. Collins may have something up to y'all, y'all may have received it, uh, eventually, I don't know if you seen it out.
I haven't seen anything out yet.
But it's in Richmond this year, um, so we'll, we'll get that out to you and me looking at that. I'd like to get those rooms booked as quickly as possible, so I don't know how many there are lying right there, that may be some trash.
They've not sent out room information for it.
Yeah, that's what I would get very soon.
Usually three per county.
It's at the fifteen through seventeen, I remember.
We can also do, um, to VACO there next month, I think Brian, Brian is out of city. One in Reno. In Reno, yeah.
All right, Mr. Farthing, do you have anything? All right, here no more business, we'll be adjourned.